Good evening and welcome to the 2021 Area 58 Community Access Media Candidate Forums. My name is Richard Goulart and I'm the Executive Director of Area 58. It is as part of our mission to serve the community that we are hosting this forum, something we had done annually since our inception until last year. This is however, our first foray into hosting this event via Zoom and streaming it at the same time. While we strive for perfection, we also realize we are human and that we also must rely on the vagaries of electronic devices and the connectivity of the internet to make all of this possible. With any luck, everything tonight will come off without a hitch. My staff and I are proud to serve the community and bring local government, school events and public access programming to you, the Carver community. Area 58 is determined to provide unbiased coverage in our government coverage and are simply the conduit for tonight's events. We had no input in the creation of the questions, nor do we have any information as to what they are prior to the time in which they are asked by the moderator. That is entirely her responsibility, that of the forum's host, and this is how we've been doing it at Area 58 for years. If you are watching this telecast on Friday, March 26th, we are going live with the event. It is happening as you are viewing it. When the next segment, the selectman segment ends, we will, there will then be a delay until the top of the hour when we will then join the candidates for both the North Carver Water District and the library trustees. As these forums will also be rebroadcast on both Channel 15 and also on demand at our website at area58.net. If you are watching them after the fact, there won't be that gap until the top of the hour and the next contested race will begin immediately after the previous one concludes. I'd like to thank you all for tuning in and thank all of the candidates for their willingness to serve the community. It is our pleasure at Area 58 to serve the town of Carver and its citizens. And now I turn the forum over to its host, Catherine Gallerani.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for having me on for another year. I'm sorry we missed everyone last year, but with COVID, we could not have the event, although maybe we could have with Zoom. Wanted to thank, welcome the three candidates for select board. They are Mary Dormer, Sarah Hewens, and Mark Townsend. Sarah Hewens and Mark Townsend are the incumbents. And we have some questions for you, but we will start with opening statements. Would like to start with Mary Dormer.
My name is Mary Dormer and I'm running for this select board. I have decided to run because I am fairly new to the town. I moved here in 2017 and I am a little bit disturbed by what I'm seeing for the current select board. I think the residents are not being represented the way that they should. And that is why I have chosen to run for this select board this year.
Thank you.
Happy to be here tonight and thank you very much for hosting us.
Thank you, Mary. Sarah, you're next. Opening statement and unmuted.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Sarah Hewens. I'm the current Chair of the Carver Select Board and I've served as a select board member for the past 12 years. I was previously elected twice to serve 10 years on the planning board. I chaired the seven-town Plymouth Carver Aquifer Advisory Committee for 10 years, was the Towns Conservation Agent for 15 years, served as a Commissioner on Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, and am currently a represent, represent Carver and Plimpton as a Director on the South Shore Community Action Council. And I've served on other town and regional committees and boards as well. My husband and I moved to Carver almost 30 years ago and we run a small business in town for the past 28. Our son David and his wife Casey are both graduates of Carver schools and now live in Wareham with their first child, our first grandchild, Jacob. For 20 years as an elected official, I worked hard for the town and its residents and have done many things I'm very proud of. These accomplishments include getting more than $4.5 million in grant funds for the town, preserving more than 600 acres of land for recreation, sportsman, endangered species habitat, to keep our taxes low and to protect our drinking water, writing a grant to lower the cost to taxpayers of the new elementary school by $2 million, negotiating to reduce the cost of our streetlights, electricity, and trash, promoted local government transparency, co-founded and served as volunteer director of a Carver Youth Center. And last but not least, I've run the Tuesday Toddler Story Hour as a volunteer at the library for 25 years. But what I'm most proud of in all those years is that I've kept every single promise I made to the voters. Thank you.
And Mark?
Thank you. Thank you to Area 58 for hosting this forum. My name is Mark Townsend and I'm running for reelection to the select board here in Carver. My wife Maureen and I have lived in Carver since 1984. We've raised our four children here. We both love this town. And I'm running for reelection because I want to be part of a team that is forward-looking and focused. I believe I have the experience necessary to help Carver meet the many challenges it faces. Prior to being a member of the select board, I was a member of the Carver Finance Committee and was elected by its members to be its Vice Chairman. I'm also a member of the Carver Housing Authority, a member of the Carver Knights of Columbus, President of the Lions Club, and I've been active in multiple youth sports organizations here in Carver. I also represent Carver on the Plymouth County Advisory Board. I also have my own business and I've run it since 1991. I know what it's like to meet deadlines. I know what it's like to work cooperatively and balance budgets to get things done. I believe these are all skills that serve me well on the select board. I believe in open and transparent government. I believe that elected officials have a responsibility to be available to the public. Throughout my term on the board, I've maintained regular office hours where residents can stop in and talk to me about whatever's on their minds. Carver faces a number of challenges. We are a small town with limited tax, limited commercial development. That means that residents bear a higher portion of the tax burden. On the finance committee and on the select board, I have been a supporter of town financial policies put in place in the last few years. These policies have enabled us to build a new Carver police station, the new fire station, the playground, to renovate the middle high school, athletic fields, and build a new elementary school with only the elementary school requiring a debt exclusion. One of my priorities on the board will be to continue these financial policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Well, we've heard one of your financial goals. Can you tell us what other goals you have for the upcoming three years?
Well, sure. I think there's a number of things Carver has that we need to face. The first of all, and it wouldn't have been a whole a couple of years ago, but it is now, is to continue to keep Carver fiscally well-run through the whole pandemic. I think this is really throwing a lot at Carver and I think we've managed it well. Meals taxes obviously are way down. Ediville has been unable to open. So I think that's a big challenge we have. I think we also have to, you know, realize that, you know, we have the council on aging and we have some challenges down at that building. It's an older building and it needs a, you know, it needs renovations from time to time. So I think that's another challenge that we have to face. And that's something we have to work cooperatively as a board to to try to, try to keep our eye on. So those are my main, my main goals for the next few years.
Okay, Sarah, please.
Yes, thank you. Well, my first, my first goal for the next three years is to see through the completion of the Plymouth Street Waterline Extension for the homes affected by the North Carver landfill pollution. And I am planning to write a grant that if awarded would help defray the cost of the water line extension for taxpayers. I'm also going to work to increase affordable housing choices as well as choices for veterans in town in such a way that respects all the residents. I plan to update our open space and recreation plan or help to update it in 2022 master plan with public input, of course, so we can continue to be eligible for state grant money because as Mark points out, things are tight and we get less and less state funding over the years that's been happening. So this grant money becomes very important. I'll continue to do my share with the select board members, the interim town administrator, and our financial team to keep a level services budget and balanced budget, which is what we have this year. So there's no reduction of services to our residents going forward. And I plan to keep working with the Carver Trail and Conservation Stewards, making all Carver's conservation land more accessible to the public. One more thing too, I'm looking at grants to possibly help upgrade some of the facilities at council on aging, as Mark pointed out, it does need some help. Things for handicapped accessibility and and, yeah, like that. Anyway. So those are some of my goals. There are more, but that's it for now.
Thank you. And Mary, what are some of your goals?
Well, I'm like Sarah and Mark, I'm not privy to the financial funds of the town just yet, but I would like to see like the town become a little bit more resident-friendly. I think there has been a lapse in responding to the needs of the residents. And especially with the seniors, I would love to see a robust council on aging where, you know, a lot of the seniors were going to it. And, and programs for children during the pandemic, there was nothing. Nobody did anything. Library didn't do anything. They, except for Sarah Zoom, but that's for little children. And the children were, I mean, I have a child and he was, it was distressing. So I would like, I would really like to see us come, the select board come together and really work and respond to the needs of the residents, which I don't believe has happened, speaking as a resident. I've gone to several select board members and I have not been taken seriously and I don't think that as a resident that my needs were met at all. So I would really like to focus on not so much the commercial aspect of, and I do know that we need, you know, commercial business to come in and everything, but I think not at the expense of the residents. Everybody needs to have a voice and I would like to see that voice responded to. So I think the focus needs to be more resident-friendly.
How do you believe the needs of the community can be better met?
Well, I think, you know, when, when a resident goes and like, for instance, the annual town meeting, there is a citizens petition that can go in and I tried to put one in this year and I, it was refused. And apparently I missed a deadline that was not posted where I said it would be posted. So I think, and then I'm, I'm watching everything and there are markers and one way that I would do is I would automatically put a marker in. Citizens petitions are important. The people should have a voice. The people should be heard. That's one way. There are, there are a lot of lawsuits from the residents, which is unnecessary if things are done correctly. Businesses shouldn't, shouldn't be brought in at the expense of the residents or at the expense of the wetlands. Bylaws shouldn't be made to make these things happen. It's wrong. And I would like to see that changed.
And Sarah, do you feel the needs of the community are being met and how would you further address that?
Well, I think that the needs of the community are always changing. And once certain needs have been met, there are always new ones. So for example, during the pandemic, things shut down. It was, it was really rough. Couple of things that I started, as Mary pointed out, was I started Story Hour by Zoom. I felt like these kids needed some continuity in their lives. It's been rough. I certainly feel for teachers, having done Story Hour on Zoom. It's not easy. I do my office hours on Zoom as well. And this may not address Mary's issue, but I did think long and hard about how to engage people, especially outdoors, which is why I started the new town committee, the Carver Trail and Conservation Stewards. Because for a long time, the, the town has really been unable to take care of those trails for a variety of reasons. And, and our conservation agent is only part-time, so she's up to her eyeballs in work as it is. So I wanted to make the land more accessible to the public to get outdoors safely during the pandemic. And also to encourage the public to actually use the trails and maintain the trails because that's the best, if, if the more public that's out there, the more these things will be maintained, right? When we first started this, it was, it was almost impossible to get on some of the, some of the trails. So that's one thing. And I think that, I mean, there, there are a lot of things. I think some of the needs of the farmers, for example, there's been a downturn in the cranberry industry. A lot of the farmers have been, have had a choice between selling off their upland for housing developments versus putting in solar projects. And solar projects have pluses and minuses. They are tax positive because we have what's called a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, which that doesn't shift the tax burden to the residents as the solar panels depreciate the way, for example, the N-Star battery did. And there are, as I said, they're a good alternative to having to build another new elementary school because we have, you know, 500 new households in town. But obviously they're not good to look at. I don't want one, I don't want to look at one either. So I think in that sense, one of the things that we need to do better is to make sure our bylaws are really done to a T so that, so that that becomes not an issue for residents. I could go on, but I want Mark to return too.
Mark, absolutely. Your turn.
Thanks. I think, I think, I agree with Sarah. I think the needs of the public are constantly changing. I think that's, it's one of the reasons I've tried so hard to maintain my office hours because folks can come in and talk about what their needs are and, and, you know, I've been able to help a number of residents through those office hours. I think another really often overlooked thing in town that I fought very hard for, and I think a couple of other members of the select board did too, it's often overlooked. I think we kept town hall open during the whole pandemic. And many of the town halls around us were closed. People couldn't get building permits. People couldn't get to the town clerk. They couldn't do anything. We were only really closed for, for a couple of weeks back when it first started. And then we, we managed to keep town hall open so residents can get in there and get what they need. And I think that's really a huge, huge accomplishment that, that we accomplished that few other people did. I've worked with Mr. LaFond and urged him to explore ways that some of the Plymouth County Care Funds can be used to do renovations over at Shirtless Parks. We can hold more outdoor activities there. Renovations to the, to the gazebo and to some of the walking trails. And I've also urged him to explore using care funds to provide some outdoor activities at the COA and over at the library. So maybe we can get people outside and, and doing some things there where the inside facilities may not be open as much as they could be. So again, there's a, there's a lot of different things, but I think we are working hard as a board to meet the, the needs of the public.
Catherine, can I just add something too to Mark's point about the town hall? We, we realize it took the COA a long time to open. But I just want to point out that even now there are towns whose COAs are not open. So, you know, we, we have a new director down there who's doing an awful lot of things and a good staff, good board. So that's something.
Catherine, if I could add one thing as well, and I, and I guess it could have been to one of my forward-looking goals at the beginning as well, but the North Carver Waterline, the Plymouth Street Waterline, I guess I see that more as a current thing rather than a forward thing because we've been working for it on it as a board for so long. But that's an important need to the public as well. And we do, we, we put that on every single agenda at the select board and we're working hard to get that accomplished.
I'd like to give Mary another turn.
I don't believe that the COA is open right now. I, actually, I know it's not open right now. So, and the seniors need, we failed the seniors during the pandemic. And I think that needs to be revisited. There should have been phone calls to them. We should have set up some volunteer things. I mean, we could have maintained the six-foot distance just to say hi, just to let them know that we were here. It's very important for them to be checked on to make sure that they're not failing in any way, that nobody has fallen down, maybe shovel or take their dog for a walk or go get medicine or anything, just to let them know that there were people here. And ask for the North Carver Water District Wardener Line. We have been waiting a very long time for that. And it, I'm, there's a lot of things that have happened with that that is not okay. And the residents have been left waiting. We're, we're using bottled water for everything. And I mean, I know that's, it's difficult in my house, in my own house, but I'm one of the residents affected by that. And I appreciate that Mark and Sarah believe that, you know, it's on every agenda and everything, but talking about it doesn't make it happen. You know, we had to get the DEP involved to make that happen because funds were reallocated to a police station. And that's what I'm talking about. It was a police station, which I know was needed, but I think water for residents was needed more. And that's not okay. And that needs to change in town hall and for the, at the level of the select board. The residents have to come first.
Kathy, if I may interject on that note, the, we are still moving forward with this and it is, it is an article on the annual town meeting that needs to be
That's my next question.
The voters.
What are the top three town meeting warrant articles on April 13th that you are concerned that voters support?
Are you asking me?
Well, I'll ask Mary first.
Okay.
Oh, I, I only know of the, the Water District. I haven't seen the, the articles. I know that the, because of the consent agreement with the DEP, I know that one of the things that has to happen is that town, that the residents have to approve the North Carver Water District line. So that's the only one that I know about. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the warrant.
Mark, how about some of the top three maybe important articles on the warrant?
Yeah, well, I think really for me, there is two that are really important. Number one is obviously the Plymouth Street Waterline. That, that, that has to be done. We have to get that accomplished. I think the capital budget is very important. There's a number of things on there that we need to accomplish. So I think those are really, for me, I mean, there's a lot of things on there, but those to me are the top, really two. They stand above the other two. We, we need to approve the capital budget and we need to get the Plymouth Street Waterline accomplished.
Sarah, how about you?
Yeah, I would put in, in order of, of sort of emergency priority, I would put the Plymouth Street Waterline first. And then I would say the, the general budget because it, it is a level service budget, which is pretty unusual in, in difficult financial times like this because that means that there's no reduction in services to the public if this budget is approved. And that's really important, I think. I agree with Mark on the capital projects, the, the way the Capitol Atlet Committee is set up. People get in line. You need a new backhoe or school bus or whatever. You wait. Sometimes, you know, 10 years. This year it's their turn for whatever's on this capital, capital plan. And finally, because, because I believe it was in 2019, some of our town's neighborhoods, beaches were almost auctioned, were almost allowed to be sold for some reason. And that, that was caught in the nick of time. And so I've written a bunch of articles that would take those, those pieces of land at the town beaches in Crystal Lake Neighborhood and Bates Pond and a number of other parcels that are currently in the select board's care and custody and they really should be in the Conservation Commission care and custody because then they're protected and they could not be sold in the future. So I think there's, those are very important as well.
I know that the select board has been talking about a town administrator search with interim town administrator Rick LaFond in the position right now. And that as soon as there's a new board, there's going to be, or old board, there's going to be a discussion about the search and that there is a public screening committee. What qualities do you want in a town administrator? Mark?
I think the qualities I want in the town administrator is a few different things. Obviously, you want somebody who has a, you know, really good financial wherewithal, municipal financial experience. I thought one of the real strengths of Mr. Malinowski was his financial experience. I thought he really did a good job there. I think you also want somebody who's good with the public. You need somebody who can, who can deal with the public, who has the ability to reach out, find common ground. I think one of the things Mr. LaFond has done very well is to reach out to various people in town when there are issues and, and try to, try to work with them. So I think you, you need a number of things. You really do. You know, the town administrator is in many ways the day-to-day face of the town. The select board is not in town all every day. The town administrator is. So you need, you need someone who not only is, is financially sound, is well-versed in municipal law, I mean, really a very well-rounded, a well-rounded person with many different skills. So yeah, I'm going to be looking at a number of things when we interview town administrator candidates.
Now Sarah?
Yes, thank you. I, I think it's really important to have someone who has a lot of experience. It's, it's crucial and I think that that's pretty, pretty evident right now. The, when Mr. LaFond was here before, I thought he was very good. He's been away and he come, he's come back and he has grown and matured. But he's also got that extra experience now under his belt. I agree with Mark that we need someone who's good with finances, obviously, because he does most of the legwork on making sure we have a balanced budget. And this year's budget, like I said, it's level services, which is terrific. But I think also it's really, really important, and this might be my top thing that I'm looking for. You need someone who can create a good work environment and is excellent with the public and all the employees. Because if you don't have a good situation at town hall, if people are there and they don't feel comfortable, they don't want to come into work, that shows and that shows to the public as well. And it makes the, the public, you know, not trust their, their government very well. And that, that's a really bad tone to set. So you, you need someone who's excellent with the public, with employees and, and wants to help.
Mary, what qualities do you want to see?
Well, I think, I think the most important quality for me is honesty. And I don't think that, that has happened in, with our town administrator, Michael Malinowski or our interim town administrator. Especially with the stuff with the North Carver Water District line. And I also think, I agree with Sarah that I think that we need somebody who makes the workplace a place that they want to be. I don't, I think down at town hall right now, there's a huge Big Brother atmosphere and I think that needs to change. I think people are afraid to say anything. I think people are afraid to speak out when things aren't going right. I mean, I've been down there several times and I don't get this warm and fuzzy when I walk into town hall. And I'm speaking, you know, as somebody who is coming, would like to come onto the select board, but also as a resident. And I think that the select board needs to take more of an active role in the day-to-day of Carver because Carver, because the town administrator is their employee, and they need to be held accountable for his actions. I mean, ultimately, it's the select board that is allowing things, and if he's not doing, or she is not doing things correctly, they need to address it. And they need to address it immediately, and it needs to, you know, sitting around and making excuses, it just, it's not going to work anymore. It just doesn't. So that's, I would like to see somebody honest. I would like to see somebody who, again, is good with the public, but takes it seriously. It's not, and I don't see that, especially right now.
Mary, what exactly do you see as the role of a select board member?
Well, I think a select board member is the, the board is, is the government of, of Carver. They need to represent the people, the residents. And I don't, so ultimately, that's what I think. I think we need to listen. I think they need to really hear what, what the residents are saying, and I don't think that's happening right now. I think there's a disconnect between the residents and the select board and the other, the other boards. And I think there needs to be, I think Carver is extremely top-heavy. There are too many boards, there are too many people that are on multiple boards, and I think that causes an issue for the residents. So I think all of that needs to be reviewed. I think, I think, I think the select board needs to take more of an active role in the day-to-day and in all the committees and boards. And consolidate a little bit.
Mark, what is the role of a school committee, of a select, select board member to you?
Well, I mean, I, the, the select board really is the town chief's exec, chief executive body. And we have the role for the overall operations of the town. I think the unique thing about the select board is, while most other town boards committees have really a specific function, the select board really has overall responsibility for the entire town. But I think it's important when we talk about individual members of the select board that we, that we are open and accessible to members of the community. And I think that's how you learn what's going on, what you need to do, where your priorities need to go. And, and again, I, I think that's where having regular office hours, being accessible to the public, really helps you within your role.
And Sarah?
Yes, thank you. I, I think the first role of select board members obviously is to set policy. And the town administrator and staff implement that policy. We're there to not only engage and inform the public, but to prepare budgets. And very importantly, have effective and efficient business meetings. That's what our meetings are about. Personally, I take the role very seriously. I talk to residents who contact me one-on-one and try to help them or steer them in the appropriate direction that I, that I think would answer their problems. And it may, may be too obvious to some, perhaps not everyone, to say that I put in a lot of hours, because I treat the role of being the chair of the select board as a full-time job, because it is. And so take a little umbrage to saying that I'm not taking it seriously, or, or treating the public with seriousness. That is, that is my number one goal as a, as a select board member.
Sarah, could you support a board decision that you did not vote for, and why or why not?
Well, that's a tough one, because I, I, you know, it would depend on the issue, Catherine, it would depend on the issue. I'm, I'm not going to sit there and not speak out if I think something's wrong, obviously. But if it were an issue that I, I felt was, you know, just not what I agreed with, but wasn't worth arguing over, I certainly wouldn't make a, a big deal out of it. So that's a hard one. And, and I think it depends on the issue. So for example, when the, when the select board decided they wanted to, they wanted to get rid of our playground and park and put, and site the police station there, I felt that that was not only the wrong decision, but actually what we had been told precisely not to do by the consultants that we hired. They suggested to go where the old fire station went. But, but you know what? Town meeting voted for it. And that's the decision. And thank goodness, we finally have a new police station. So I don't know if that answers your question very well, but.
Mark, how would you answer that?
Well, I, I think for the most part, sometimes, you know, we may vote in the minority, it could have a three-to-two or four-to-one decision that you're on, on the, on the, on the minority side of, but I think for the most part, we agree to disagree, and we, and we move forward as a town. I, I think that's what we do. We, we argue our point. And maybe the rest of the board agrees, maybe they, maybe they disagree. But in the end, we move forward for the good of the town. And that's, that's what we have to do, I think, as select board members.
Absolutely.
Mary, how would you answer that question?
Well, I, I agree with Sarah. That's a hard question. But I think ultimately, if you're a part of a board, you have to, even if you disagree, and the majority agrees with it, I think you have to put, you know, your personal feelings aside into what's best for the town. So yes, I could support something that, I would not, yeah, I would be able to support something.
Do you believe the, a select board should have a social media role?
A role? Or a rule?
Role.
That depends on, on the issue, really. But yes, I, I don't see anything wrong with a select board member putting their opinion out there. But I do, and I've been, I've written this on social media, there are some things that they should not weigh in on, and put, put their feelings out there on, like, I think, I think it's all, I think it depends on the issue. And if they're being challenged, I think that they have a right to defend themselves. Yes.
How do you develop, balance development and preserving the rural character of the town? Mark?
Well, it's difficult. I, I think, you know, people reach out to me all the time, and that, that's one of the things I hear from people. They, they want to preserve the rural character of Carver. But let's face it, we're, we're primarily, the tax base is primarily residential. And at some point, if we want to help people with the taxes, we need to develop the commercial base of the town. I think a big part of that will be the North Carver development. I think we moved a long way on that. The, the state roadway grant that we got was one of the largest ever awarded to a town by the state. So I think that couldn't go a long way. I think, I think that's a good spot for commercial development. And I think that's, that's how we do it, with, with that type, that type of development.
Now Sarah?
Well, that's a good question, because it is, it is a constant conundrum. And of course, I'm told by a lot of people who were born in Carver that it's not the town they knew by any stretch of the imagination. But I, I think we still consider ourselves rural. I think it's also important to realize that the, the, the quantity and the quality of development of commercial that we would need in this town to really make a significant difference in our taxes would change the face of Carver. I mean, we would be another, you know, Quincy, I'll just pick a town, city. So I think it is important that we've, we've limited the space that's going to be developed commercially to that portion of North Carver, that Mark pointed out, served by the, the North Carver Water District. And that kind of, obviously keeps it where it's currently zoned. And it helps to take it away, take that sort of thing away from all the other more beautiful parts of town, I think. The, the solar programs, again, we, I talked about that a little bit earlier. I think our biggest risk is having cranberry growers, although I'm told they're not, they're not out of the business. Things are tough right now. The price of berries is not what it once was, and it, it's, doesn't seem to be improving. And so for someone to make a living on, on this kind of land, you have a couple of choices. And one of them is housing developments, which, as I said, are tax-negative. So was my house when my son was in school. What I paid in taxes didn't begin to give or cover what, what it costs to, 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 to school one child. So they are positive in that sense. And they, you know, do help us financially. But we have to be careful. We have to be careful how those are approved, and how and where they're approved. So I think, I think having our zoning where it is now, and especially the, the fact that that's zoned green business park is also important, because that way they have to do things a certain way up there, which obviously is better for, for the environment.
Mary?
Well, I, I don't, there are a lot of people moving into Carver, so I don't see how we wouldn't be able, we, we need the commercial businesses to come in. And I agree with Sarah, if it's, if it's in, you know, one specific area, I don't think it'll really change the rural aspect of the town. And I also agree with her about the solar. You have to be careful with it, you know, for the farmers and everything. But it does generate revenue. So I'm not, I mean, I think, I think, I, I grew up in New York City, so I think the whole town is rural, you know. But, and I think it's beautiful, and I would hate to see it change too much. But you do, you have to, you have to be able to generate revenue for the, for the town. And that's how you do it, is you bring in commercial businesses. But I, I do think when businesses are coming in and asking to build things, I think we need to really listen to the residents and what they're saying. And if they disagree with it, and wait what's going on. You know, why they don't want it, if they don't want it. Why it wouldn't be good for the town.
Mary, do you have a little idea of what kind of businesses you would want to see there?
Over in North Carver?
Yes.
Well, I would not want to shop anymore. But, you know, I'm, you know, like, like regular small businesses, I mean, you could, you could have businesses there and make it beautiful, like they do in other parts of Massachusetts. So that it is appealing to the people that come to Edoville, or, you know, have them come and see the rest of the town, like little boutiques and stuff like that. That would be nice. Something for the farmers, something that, you could have a lot of businesses there that capture the rural aspect of the town.
Mark, what kind of businesses would you want to see in North Carver specifically?
Thanks. I, I don't have a specific type of business in mind, but I will tell you that I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that property is used for its highest and its best purpose. Whenever businesses go in there, we need to make sure the town is protected. We need to protect the water supply. We need to protect public safety. We need to make sure that anything that can, all our, all our X's are crossed and all our I's are dotted. We need to, that's what we need to do. I, I'm not, I don't have a particular business in mind, but we need to protect the water, we need to protect public safety and protect those things when we do anything up there.
And Sarah, any ideas, or have you heard anything what people want?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that one of the things, and, and I'm, I am going to mention two businesses. I'm not touting or advertising them. I'm simply pointing out that there, there are a number of businesses in town that are here, I think, because it is Carver. So the Kubota Company down on 58 North, the agway that's coming in at the corner of Forest and, and 58. I mean, you know, this is, this is a farming community, and and also people like to garden. But sometimes when people complain about our, our taxes and why don't we get businesses, I say to, well, have you seen the business park off Commerce Drive and Marion Way? Now, that's a thriving business park. It has a ton of businesses in there. And then there's one across the street from it that, I can't remember the name of it offhand, but I, I didn't even know we had it. They make optics. There's a business in town that makes optics. How interesting is that? So I, you know, I would like to see a business park. I, I know this town, we do not allow big box stores, which I think is good. I think once you start doing that, that's sort of the end of the rural character. I guess we'll see what comes into, to North Carver. I, I hope it's more than one project. I hope it's a diverse, diversity of businesses.
Well, I think it's almost time for closing arguments. I just want to remind everybody that the three of you are running for the select board on April 24th, Saturday, April 24th. And I'll let you go first, Mark.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Catherine, Mary, Sarah. Thank you, Area 58, for hosting us. The town continues to face a number of challenges. I've lived here since 1984, and one thing we know that they'll always chase, face challenges, but the challenges just keep changing. None of the issues are simple, and we need to work together as a town and as a select board to, to find answers to these things. That's why I think my experience is so important. As I did three years ago, I pledge to you to listen to all sides of an issue and respect all viewpoints before I make a decision. Again, my name is Mark Townsend, and I ask for your vote on April 24th. Thank you.
Sarah, please.
Thank you, Catherine, and thank you to Area 58, Mark, and Mary. I, I think the best way to judge a public official's future performance is to look at their past performance. To learn more about what I've done for Carver in the past, I invite you to go to my website at sarahhewens.com. But now I'll just talk briefly about the future. If you choose to elect me to the select board, some of my goals I've stated earlier over the next three years are to see through the completion of the Plymouth Street Water Line extension, to try to work to increase affordable housing choices, update our open space and, and open space and master plan so we can stay eligible for grant money, keep working on making sure we have a level services balanced budget, so there's no reduction of services for our residents going forward, and keep working with, to make conservation land more accessible to the public, keeping our trails open, usable, educational, and fun. When my husband and I moved to Carver almost 30 years ago, we were welcomed with open arms. I love this town, and I'll never leave it. But I believe we need experience and the knowledge of how our town works to give what residents, to give residents what they've said they need and want for the future. I would be honored to have your vote on April 24th, so we can keep working together to make our town an even better place to live. Thank you.
Hey, Mary, we're going to end with you, closing statement.
Thank you, Catherine, for hosting, and Mark and Sarah in Area 58. I don't have the experience that Mark and Sarah have on the select board, but I think that I can bring a fresh perspective to the select board. I think I know that I will work for the residents. I know that I will be your voice if you vote for me, and I ask for your vote for, on April 24th. And I will do my best if I am elected.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
We'll invite Richard back.
Thank you all for, uh, thank you all for being here tonight. And again, thank you for offering to serve the town as you have. Good luck on April 24th. We'll, we're going to come back in about 12 minutes with the candidates for North Carver Water District and also for Library Trustee. Thanks very much. And hold on. Thank you all.